Shalom, welcome to The Jewish View. My name is Rabbi Nachman Simon with the Rabbados of Delmar, and we're together with my co-host, Mark Ronich of JBizTechValley.com and Statewide News. We have a very special guest with us today, Mike O'Brien, with the Albany Common Council. Mike, welcome to The Jewish View.
Yeah, welcome, Mike.
Good to be here. We'd like to talk about the budget, some money over here. That's the main news over here nowadays with Albany.
So how big is the city-proposed budget?
Well, the budget is slightly over $171 million. It's actually down half a million from last year.
It's down from last year?
It's down half a million from last year. But that's because certain things are being trimmed back, certain things that I would think would be better to have. I mean, the summer youth program is being trimmed back. Everything from special events, in fact, even the snow removal budget was trimmed back. And there's a lot of positions that have gone unfilled. And another one that was trimmed back, which I thought was a good program, was the SNUG program. That was the program--
Guns Backwards that Senator Malcolm Smith was trumpeting also.
Yes, the state originally funded that, and then we had to pick up the funding ourselves. So everything is being cut back.
What was the money for it to buy back the guns?
No, the money for it was actually to run a restorative justice program. And the theory of that is that none of the information-- it's not a police investigation. It's community people with facilitators trying to work out dialogue between the parties that are in conflict with each other. And it was deemed to be quite successful. The number of shootings in Albany had dramatically declined, certainly the number of killings had. But by all accounts, it was a success and had a lot of return for the relative small value the city was spending on it.
So how much is it reduced from this current year? How much is this proposed budget?
Well, right now, it's totally eliminated.
No, no, I'm talking about overall budget. How much is the overall budget down?
Oh, the overall budget is reduced by half a million dollars.
Half a million.
It comes out to slightly over-- the proposed budget is $171, 73,000.
So are you going to advocate for more increase in some of these programs?
Well, I think so. Well, first of all, there's always anticipated vacancy slots that become vacant and are not always immediately filled. So you always get a certain build, you know, you always get a certain amount of savings. Tough to actually calculate that into it. And it's even tough to calculate-- the city's really only revenue, other than taxes and state aid, is, of course, the landfill. And it's always difficult to calculate how much revenues you're going to get from that. I expect that, you know, like this year, they're projected that they're going to have gross revenues there well over $9 million a year, with some additional revenues from the--
But the landfill is almost filled.
Well, what happened is we got permission to expand it, as you know, and we just finished construction of the final cell. There will be no more expansions beyond this because, in fact, the landfill is now totally surrounded by dedicated park. And in fact, there's a restoration.
Where is the landfill?
Out by Connor--
It's the tallest thing in Albany.
Yeah, out by the Daughters of Sarah, across the street from Daughters of Sarah.
Yeah, it's across the street.
I didn't even notice it.
You never noticed the hill?
Well, eventually, when it does close, and the projected years are sometime after 2020, that the whole thing is going to be restored into a park. You know, they're going to actually seed the hill, the mountain, whatever you would call it.
Well, they did that in Brooklyn, near my house in Brooklyn. They had this-- the country's-- one of the country's largest landfills. And then they tarped it over, and then they had grass growing over it.
What is it now?
It's now, you know, a place where you can--
Well, eventually, this will become a park.
That's great, okay.
And even the area around it is being buffered and restored back into park. So it's supposed to ultimately--
So we generate $9 million, and we're encouraged-- because we're encouraging other municipalities to dump their garbage in our landfill.
Yeah, most of the revenue, though, comes from commercial haulers. Actually, the interesting thing with other municipalities-- most municipalities have private contractors pick up their residential trash. We don't. We, as a city, pick it up for our residents. Up to units that house four apartments, the city will pick it up. Other than that, it's picked up commercially. The future of all of that? I mean, certainly, we've seen a great increase in recycling. We have single-stream recycling. The city makes a little bit of money from that, probably enough to cover the cost of picking it up. And the big thing is it's an extender on the landfill, of course, because a lot of that stuff is not going into the landfill. And by making it single-stream, it's been made a lot easier for residents to take every piece of plastic, paper. You can't throw clothes or you can't throw food into your recycle bin, but glass, metal, just about everything else you can, and you don't have to really sort it out.
So where are the-- well, let me ask you this. We're going to have a new administration next year. So is this a lame-duck budget, pretty much?
Well--
How much consultation does the Common Council go into talks with Kathy Sheehan with this? Because she's into finance, being the city treasurer. So, you know, it's not like a stranger who doesn't understand the numbers.
Well, if you strictly read the city charter, not much is required. It's basically the mayor's budget. But in reality, Kathy has been very proactive. She's been advising us on our bonding indebtedness, ways to reduce that. And she's just been advising us as to smart financial policy. So will this change somewhat? I imagine it will. I would imagine Kathy's going to come in and probably change a lot of this. Because one of the ways that, you know-- the thing which we lost for the last few years was the mayor would go to the governor, and they had a good relationship. And they would get something called a spin-up, which is about-- it's usually at least $7.5 to $8 million of extra additional state monies. But it's a one-- it's a year by year by year.
So this doesn't take into account another spin-up?
We didn't get any. In fact, what Cuomo specifically said was, any municipality that's financially stressed-- he's created this mechanism of a review process where they can get up to $5 million additional aid. And they have to go to that committee, that board, and justify their--
So that-- but that's none of that money--
That's not in this budget.
So if it happens, it's a windfall, basically.
Well, and I think Kathy is as well-- Kathy Sheehan, who I expect will be the new mayor-- as well as had said, she will not make that case, that we deserve a bigger increase. Well, they won't call it a spin-up. They'll call it something else. Because technically, the spin-up--
Well, I'm just talking about us colloquially.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Technically, the spin-up was not a gift. Technically, the spin-up came from future years of payments in lieu of taxes off the Empire State Plaza.
So if you-- there's no property tax increase?
Well, yes, there is. For residential, it's definitely going to be under 2%. For commercial properties-- and don't ask me to explain the formula-- but for commercial properties, it's probably going to average out to more than 2%.
But how do you reduce the spending and reduce the budget and still have to take-- and still ask residents and businesses to pay more in taxes?
Because we're getting less-- we're not getting that spin-up-- $7.5 million. So out of $170 million budget, figure out the percentage of that, you're talking probably about 4.5-- I can't do my math that quick, but maybe anywhere between 4% and 5%. The city's going to have to spend more with that diminishment of the $7.5 to $8 million.
So the city--
That's why the taxes are going to--
So the residents and the businesses are picking up for what--
The state is not giving us--
For what the state's not giving us.
And they're pulling a certain amount of money out of the cash reserves, which-- the latest figure that I heard is going to leave us with a cash reserve of about $9 million.
Is that okay with you?
Well, I would like it to be more. It's been less in some other years. Before my time, it was pointed out that it had gone down to something like about $3 million. But, you know, you have unexpected, unanticipated things. I'm trying to think if you--
Floods.
Yeah, if you needed for some sudden major road reconstruction or something.
More snow plowing that you don't expect.
More snow plowing, yes. You can never-- Some years-- I mean, like, the last couple of years--
You didn't need so much.
We didn't need so much. But I believe it was three years ago when we had a colossal snowfall. The snowfall budget, which was budgeted for six figures, went well into well over a million. So that kind of stuff would tap against your reserves. So-- but one of the unique things with Albany, of course, being the capital city and being the major metropolitan area in the whole region, is we have a lot of entities that do not pay taxes.
And about 80% is what I was told at one time. But 60 more recent.
Yeah, and that's based on not the total geographic square footage, but it's based on the assessed value of those properties.
So we got relig-- sorry, Rabbi, but we got religious institutions that--
Yeah, but that's probably the smallest part.
And we have the state buildings--
We have the state buildings--
Or government-owned buildings, I should say.
We have government-- yes.
And we got education buildings, like SUNY and other--
Yes.
Education buildings.
And we have hospitals.
Hospitals, of course. But they-- the city wants to make some sort of deal with the hospitals--
Yes.
That they should donate money--
Yes, well, I wouldn't exactly call it donating.
As much as they're asking for donations, you're asking them for donations.
It's interesting. We had-- a couple of years ago, the city council commissioned a group, which had representatives from the colleges, from the hospitals, from the state. And it was the Commission on Public Private Budgetary Cooperation. And they just put out a draft report a few weeks ago. And they looked at a lot of different municipalities in New York State and outside of New York State. And they pointed out ways, basically, to either get a voluntary contribution, a payment in lieu of taxes, or have special assessments based on-- I mean, every institution in Albany, be it not-for-profit or private, commercial, gets some benefit from the fact that the city paves the streets, that the city provides the police, that the city provides the emergency services and provides fire. And that can be quantified, I think, based on the, you know, average--
And then you could send them a bill.
Cost per value of a particular piece of property.
And then you could pay-- send them a bill for the amount that you feel--
Yeah, but under the state law, as I understand it, if they're what they call a mandatory tax exemptant, if they are strictly educational, strictly religious, strictly governmental, they have a mandatory tax exemption, even though in some cases, they choose to make a voluntary contribution. But you have kind of hybrids. And the one that I classically think of is you have Nanotech, which pays nothing. Nanotech is not-- and in fact, Nanotech is really a not-for-profit corporation. And it's affiliated with SUNY, although that affiliation is soon to be broken. And it's going to be its own educational institution. But it's far more than an educational institution. I mean, it definitely is an economic catalyst in capitalism. I don't think anybody would argue that. But it has commercial aspects. You have some Fortune 500 companies--
That's right.
That rent space and use of the equipment. So the gist of what's being kind of spun out is the city should entertain discussions with entities like that, which are basic-- may in part be not legitimate, not-for-profits, but have some commercial aspects, like Albany Med. I asked this question when they were amending the Park South plan. We're still waiting for the official answer. But I think I know what the official answer is. In some of their own space, they lease to doctors who do their own billing. So that's really a commercial aspect.
Well, they also lease-- they also have space-- like, there's a Subway shop inside Albany Med.
And a Panera Bread across the street.
Well, that's across the street, but that's--
But I think they own the building.
But that's-- but Albany Med owns the building.
Yeah, they own some of those buildings to our--
Right, but I'm talking about, let's say, inside Albany Med's original building, there's a Subway.
Yeah, and there's a key bank.
So are they paying taxes? Or are they umbrellaed in under the not-for-profit?
I think by and large, they are umbrellaed in.
Right, so they should be paying taxes.
They should-- yeah, there should be a way of parsing out the commercial aspect--
That's right.
--of the not-for-profit.
I agree with you. Go for it, Michael.
Well, I would think if you take-- and so-- and, you know, Albany has a hole in its budget now, according to the treasurer, of about $16 million out of $171 million budget. I would think you could work out agreements that we could all live with-- to fill that hole. I mean, because I don't see-- well, hopefully, the state of New York would-- I mean, I can make a suggestion to the state of New York to help out Albany tremendously.
Please do, please do.
Take the Harriman campus, go with the original plans for private smart development. And you would get a nice mix of tech, residential, office, and maybe retail. That would go-- that plan was suddenly dropped. Well, it kind of-- Pataki came up with it. I thought it was a great idea. Then it went into limbo. And now the governor seems to be dropping it with the idea that he has this concept of Startup New York. He hasn't specifically mentioned the Harriman campus for his tax-free startup, New York. But he took it off the table as for private development. At least, all of the old plans that were out there have been scrapped. We've been told that they're dead.
So let me go back, and you talk about the Harriman campus. Where is your district? Because it butts right up against--
My district-- and we all went through redistricting this year. So I will give you--
Which neighborhoods do you represent now? Forget what it was, but what do you represent now?
Right now, I represent a little bit of the Beverwick Neighborhood Association. But not a lot, only what's on this side of Allen Street.
That's fine, okay, it's part of Beverwick.
Upper Washington Avenue, all of that. And that area runs-- well, technically, it runs up to the apartment house, the Alexander. And now, what I now have taken on is everything beyond Fuller Road. So that has-- it has Daughters of Sarah, Masserie, Terezian House, Avila, Atria, the Dunes, which is single-family homes, Point of Woods--
Out to 155, that little segment.
Out to and slightly beyond.
But didn't-- when Frank Camiso was on--
That's-- used to be part of Young Frank's.
Didn't he say that he represents out there, too?
Well, up until December 31st, he does. But it got redistricted, and they gave him a much larger chunk of State University. And they also gave him some other parts of Western Avenue, Tudor Road, Clarendon, those streets, that he didn't have.
Okay, so you picked up that area going out there.
So I picked up that area.
So if anyone from Daughters of Sarah is watching this program, and they want to know who their common councilman is, that's you.
Yes, yes.
All right, so that's good to know. Because they-- you know, and then the Jewish Federation is out that way, too, by Daughters of Sarah.
Yeah, which building are they?
It's in the front of Daughters of Sarah, the Maserie.
When you take a left, then--
Yeah, it's the first building.
Yeah, you don't-- they don't have a big name, I know what you're saying.
Well, I should take you over and introduce you to Rob Kovach, who's the new executive director.
Yeah, I would like that.
And I should, you know, make a connection.
Yeah, because institutions like that are hard to get into. You can't usually just walk in.
Well, I'm happy to gain entry for you. That's right, be the tour guide, so.
And the landfill is in the district.
And Daughters of Sarah, you should be meeting with-- what's his name? Mark-- what's his name? Koblenz? Mark Koblenz. So we'll-- I'll get you hooked up, now that I know this is new territory for you. So those are-- so what are the major problems or quality of life when you go to these neighborhood association meetings that you hear about?
Well, when you-- the major thing-- well, the always-- the ones you always hear about are street repair, sidewalk repair, cleanups. I get a little bit of issue with vacant buildings, but not as much.
What about crime?
Yes, we always have-- the-- actually, I commend the Albany Police Department because I think their reorganization was splendid. They have a lot more reliance on community policing. So every--
Tell Chief Krokoff you said that when he comes on the show.
Okay. No, it's-- I definitely think they've done an outstanding job. Not only did they just do it, but they created a citizen police-- Community Policing Advisory Board, which meets periodically. And either the chief or the assistant chief or, you know, command-level people or the police department go to those meetings and get the input. So I get some complaints with regard to crime. But there's always a community police officer that covers every neighborhood association.
But I'm talking about, generally speaking, have you-- have you been a victim of crime? Have you seen crime in your-- in these neighborhoods? Have you-- you know, because I go to my--
Well, the only victim of crime that I've been, I'm going to say, in the past decade that I can remember is having stuff taken out of my car. Nothing of great value, and it was my fault for not locking it.
For not locking. That's a-- but a lot of people do that, especially in my neighborhood, in the Whitehall-Heldberg neighborhood associations. And they have-- you know, I go to those meetings, and I hear people complain that there's a pole that's not being used, and they put a new pole next to it, and they didn't take down the old pole. And I'm thinking, if that's my biggest problem in the neighborhood--
That's not a big problem.
I'm doing okay here, you know?
Yeah, I know when you get-- actually, in my previous district, I went a little bit north on Central Avenue, behind-- you know, the area by Waterville Avenue. And there, you get some problems like vacant buildings. We have a few. I mean, I basically have one vacant building problem. And it's a bank foreclosure. And it's on Washington Avenue. It can be seen by anybody who drives past it. And hopefully, it'll come to a happy solution where the bank will kind of be pushed into maybe facilitating a sale of it.
But, you know, I'm interested in the landfill. Does anybody ever look into the alternative energy? I mean--
Actually, yes.
I'm not a scientist, but they always talk about using energy and there shouldn't be any landfills.
Yes, actually, we entered into a contract with a company called Fortestar about-- I'm going to say three to four years ago. Previous to that, we had a contract with a company from Minnesota, which was paying us a pittance for the methane to make it into energy. And most of our methane was being flared off. So Fortestar came in, and Fortestar paid the cost of putting in the new generators. There are five generators there now. And I don't know what the exact kilowatt output is. And the city's contractual responsibility was to deliver the gas from all the pipes that it had drilled in the landfill to Fortestar's generators. We're delivering enough gas, I am told, to power four of those five generators. So there's a prediction in the budget of a figure of approximately $400,000 energy. You know, that's the value of the methane we deliver, which would be produced anyway. It doesn't-- the only extra work it takes-- well, actually, it takes no extra work because the state required us to ventilate it through a flare prior to ventilate-- prior to delivering it to a generator. So that's $400,000 waste of energy. And what do I think is going to happen for the long-range future when our landfill fills up? I think you're going to see a lot more sophisticated recycling. And I think you will see waste energy. I'm told there's a company is looking at the old BASF property in Rensselaer for a waste of energy, which would be-- there's different types of waste energy.
That's right.
There's these big incinerators with huge smokestacks. Or there are these ones which are vesselized, and they literally cook the trash. It produces methane and reduces it to a residue about 1/10th or less the size of what went into the process. So I think, you know-- my feeling is probably, by the time our landfill closes, you'll see something like that commercially run, probably in Rensselaer where BASF is.
So you would take the stuff from the landfill and truck it over to Rensselaer?
No, well, we might have a transfer station there. What happens is-- but fortunately, let's say it's that close, then you could probably take your yellow truck that goes from house to house and picks the stuff up and bring it right over there. But let's say you had to bring it to a facility that's further away, then the city would have to have a transfer station. And the yellow trucks would come, and then a bigger truck would take everything. Hopefully, we don't have to transport stuff 200 miles away.
No, of course not. We shouldn't have to.
Like the city of New York transports its garbage, in some cases, 600 or 800 miles away.
Right, no, that's what they've said.
Which is tremendously expensive.
So-- go ahead, finish.
Oh, I was just going to say, so we've been fortunate there. But, you know, I think the long-range thing is they're going to get away from landfills and go into not only-- not only recovering glass metals and things like that, but composting food. There's some pilot programs out there, but they're nothing on a big enough scale. I mean, consider how much food we throw out.
Well, I know.
You know, the pilot programs-- just this pilot program process, I don't know, the equivalent of maybe a few hundred meals a day. Take the city of Albany, and you can't do that by turning compost over in a farm field. You need a more sophisticated facility.
Well, we just have a few minutes left. So I want people-- this is the first time you're on our show. And I want people to know who you are and know about you. So tell us, where'd you grow up? How old are you? What-- did you go to public school, private school?
I grew up in Albany. I am 68, born in 1945. I went to Catholic schools in Albany.
VI or--
No, it was CBA.
CBA, okay.
And then for a while, I studied in a Catholic seminary. And then I left that. And then I was basically working in social work. I was working Albany County Social Services. That was my first real job in 1968. And then I went to law school. And then when I got out of law school--
Did you finish? Are you a lawyer?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, I graduated in 1975. Albany Law School. And I got to say, most of what I did, I-- as an attorney, I worked for the county of Albany and the state of New York. And then I was also in the National Guard, where I became a JAG. So now in retirement, I retired three years ago. And in retirement now, I am volunteering with Legal Aid and the Albany Housing Coalition.
Oh, you are?
Which houses homeless veterans, doing various kinds of work. Mostly, it's benefits-related, some landlord-tenant issues, some family court issues, both support and custody issues.
So this foreclosed house in your.
That I haven't gotten into.
You know, that could be right up your alley.
I haven't done that, but, but I've been doing, you know.
Okay, legal aid.
Yeah, I've been doing basically the legal aid in areas that I feel comfortable in.
And you're married?
Yes.
For how long?
I've been married for 31 years.
And your bride's name?
My bride's name is Diana.
Diana.
She lives in Troy.
Okay, how many children do you have?
I have three children, and just today, this morning, I became a grandfather.
For the first time?
For the first time.
Mazel tov.
Yeah, Mazel tov.
So that was, they say having grandchildren is a lot easier than having children.
Well, I see bumper stickers that say, if I knew how easy it was to be a grandparent, I would skip being a parent.
Yeah.
So tell me, you know, your son-in-law, you said, was Jewish?
He is, yes.
Last name's Goldstein.
Yes.
And he lives in Schenectady or Niskiuna?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so.
So.
You had some Jewish roots there, coming in from?
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of interesting, because the baby has, the baby's a girl, so the name is Ariel Sarah. And I'm told that the name Ariel, which is, can be both a boy's and a girl's name, actually is a name for Jerusalem.
Uh-huh.
And you were telling me at the beginning, before we went on air, any name beginning in E-L means God or from God.
Yeah.
So Ariel must mean city from God. My, my name is Michael, and I remember, as a kid, you know, Michael is an angel from God.
Well, Michael the archangel, right?
Yeah, yeah. So it's kind of interesting, you know, the, the cross-cultural things I find very interesting.
And have you had any other Jewish connections besides your son-in-law? Are you learning now about all our Jewish holidays?
Not directly, well, no, just kind of myself, I mean, just kind of reading into, I mean, it's kind of interesting, because sometimes I would read some of these texts